All right, I now call the March 7th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. Tonight's invocation is going to be given by Mr. Tim Krueger. He's the Board Chair of the Erlanger Christian Church. If you come to the podium, there will be a little orange button. And if you press that, it'll turn the microphone on for you.
On behalf of Erlanger Christian Church, thank you for this invitation. Shall we pray? Lord God, we give you thanks for this day, for this opportunity to gather in your presence, to be a part of your good work in the world. We give you thanks for the leadership gathered here this evening and for their desire to serve your people in this way. They are tasked with a great responsibility, and we give thanks for their commitment and dedication. God, we pray that your Spirit of truth, justice, and peace will flow in, through, and around them. Grant them wisdom, humility, and courage to make decisions that are in keeping with your desires for those they serve, seeking your will and the well-being of this community above their own. Bless them now as they engage in the business that comes before them. May they truly listen to one another and respect one another in a spirit of grace. Guide, lead, and direct them in all they do. Bring in honor and glory in your name. Amen.
All right, we have Troop 2907 Girl Scouts here with us today, and they're going to lead us in the pledge. So if you girls want to come up, like we talked, and you're going to turn around and face the flag, and now we're going to ask everybody to stand for the pledge. Very good, girls. I heard your voices louder than anybody's. It's a great job. All right. I think you guys are heading out. Look to your leaders. Thanks for hanging out with us. Thank you. Congratulations on your democracy badge. You guys did great. All right, Ms. Hoffman, if you can please take role.
Ms. Nicely?
Present.
Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Ms. Kyle?
Here.
Mr. Skidmore?
Here.
Mr. Hermes?
Here.
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Reckers?
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
All right, thank you. You've received a copy of the minutes for the February 7th, 2023 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Ms. Kyle, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Reckers, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. This evening's special presentation is our Business Spotlight, and we have George Bettis here from Greek to Me. We all know and love your restaurant, so thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you so much for having me. A little thrown off tonight. I came in and I thought this was the celebrity roast of Tyson Hermes, but I'm thrown off here, so I guess I'm going to have to kind of wing it a little bit here. But for those that don't know me, my name is George Bettis, and I own Greek to Me Restaurant. We've been a part of this community since 2000. I'm honored to be here tonight. I was looking at some things, and I was actually asked to speak here almost to the day 20 years ago. Completely different time than now. We've been in business for 23 years, and things have definitely changed since then, always for the better. I appreciate everything that you guys do for this city. Like I said, I opened in 2000. It's been a long road. It's gone by very fast, seen a lot of change in the city, and I've been a full-time member living in the city now since 2012, and there's no place I'd rather be than Erlanger. I've had, at one time, three restaurants going, closed those down over the years, and remained in Erlanger because this is my home. We've been asked over the years to move, to go to Florence, go to Union, go to some other places, and Erlanger is where we're at and where we'll always be. I've had a lot of support from this community over the years, and times were hard at the beginning. You know, like I said, 20 years ago, I was asked to speak here. I think that night I was probably close to slit in my wrist because, you know, those days, I was doing maybe $30 to $50 in business. I had to move back, move back home with my mom. Most people would have closed down shop, and I kind of dug in and believed in what I wanted to do and believed in this area. A lot of hard work over the years, and it's afforded me time with my kids now. I don't have to work as hard as I used to work or as long as I used to, and it allows us to do different things. We sponsor some youth baseball teams, some travel baseball teams based out of Erlanger area now, so I get to spend my time doing that a lot. But I'm also at that restaurant every day till at least four, and if any police officers are in here that come by at night and come visit me, I'm there from 11 o'clock at night till about 3:00 a.m. My wife's not too happy with that, but, you know, work has to get done. But if you don't know about Greek to Me, we are, well, we started off as pretty much just a Greek restaurant, and we've kind of fused into something different. It's a Greek twist. There's a lot of different items, and, you know, like I said, it's been a long road, and we're honored to be here and honored to speak to you guys tonight, open to any questions you may have, because I am just kind of winging it again. I was expecting to roast Tyson here in his really cool glasses. I love those, though, by the way. They're really cool. But yes, open to any questions. You know, like I said, Greek restaurant, we've been there 23 years now. We're at the corner of Dixie Stevenson Commonwealth, right across from the Dixie Club next to Emerson's Bakery, and, you know, we just love being a member of this community. And I can't, I can't say enough for the city. I really can't. We have, you know, top-notch police department, fire department. I still, to this day, you know, and you see some, some issues with this, you know, people always complaining about something, but our road crews can't be matched by anybody in this country, I can guarantee that. But yeah, so that's where I'm at, very thankful.
Go ahead.
You've got that really cool device that you use to shave the Euro meat off. Do you have one of those at your house, too?
You know, I did at one time. I did have one at one time that ran off propane, and I don't want to see it anymore. You know, I've cut enough. My arms and my wrists hurt from years of using that knife, and now my, my wife, she, she's the Euro meat ninja. But I can always, you know, for private parties, Tyson, I can, I can take care of you. I can take care of you. Would love to see, you know, more of you in more often. I think I've thrown down more pancakes at the Hive than you have Euros, so.
If you could make me-
I'm going to call you out.
If you can make me a gluten-free Euro.
We'll work on that. Remind my Google, please.
Because I've been craving one, and I've been gluten-free for like six years now.
We'll let you slide on that.
It's such a bummer. All right, so I want to thank you for your service, because not only are you a business owner, owner within the city, a resident of the city, but you also serve on our Board of Adjustments.
Yes, I forgot to mention that.
Yeah.
You're actually in my seat right now.
I'll evacuate it. Anytime you want it, you just let me know.
No, I love, I love being on that board. There's great people on there, and Emmy, I mean, you're, you know, no, I'm not, you know, you, you're the mayor. She runs this town. This city would be nothing without Emmy Randall.
Shout out to those at home who don't know, it is Two for Tuesday.
Yes, it is Two for Tuesday, and we are open for another 50 minutes, so go on in.
I do have to say, your social media is top-notch.
We've kind of toned it down a little bit. Everybody's been a little bit more on edge since, you know, since the COVID thing happened, but we're going to kind of get back to that.
It's very clever.
Thank you.
I like the work you do.
Appreciate it.
All right, any other questions for George? All right, thank you again for being here. Thank you for your service.
I won't take up any more of your time with, you know, being boring, so thanks a lot. I appreciate you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you guys do.
All right, public comment. We have three individuals that are listed here. Dr. Hutchison is our first. If you just press the little orange button, that'll turn the mic on. There you go.
Well, I can't compete with that, but I've been in my office for 23 years and been in practice for 30. Dr. Hutchison, I'm on the corner of Dixie and Kennebou. This may be a little premature. It's still in the planning zone, but I have some big concerns about the project. I understand that Kennebou needs to be redone. I've spoken with Mr. Glenn. Scares me to death the potential to lose nine parking spots on the side of my building. I've got 15 or 16 between the front, back, and the side. Got two businesses in there. I've got a chiropractic office, and a massage therapist in there. So just letting it be known that I've, it scares me to death. I mean, that's got the potential to crush me.
And Dr. Hutchison, I want to make sure that you are comforted to know that we are not going to do anything that is going to negatively impact you. We are going to make sure that we improve and we create a plan with you that will exceed what you already have. So we won't ever put you in a situation where we're going to take something away that we're not going to replace with what's there, or even better, so.
During the process, will I be allowed to put some input into this?
Absolutely, absolutely, 100%. So we, you know, this is in such the preliminary stages, but please know that we have already communicated with each other. We, we understand the challenges that exist with your parking, and we want to work with you to make an even better situation for you. Please, please be comforted and understand that we will work with you and make it a great situation. I promise.
All right.
Okay.
On a lighter note, the homeless people have moved down the street a little bit. I spoke to you last year about that, so.
And Becky, I don't know if you've met Becky Strauss, our police social worker, but she is very active and engaged in the homeless situation and actively goes back into the woods. We, we monitor that situation on a regular basis. She knows where they tend to hang out, and we go back and make sure that it's not becoming an issue any longer.
Well, I've cleaned the woods out behind my building and redone the parking lot back in there in the last couple of months, so we haven't, bless its winter, so.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work that you've done, and thank you for bringing it to our attention, and, and please know that we're, we are definitely actively working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Thomas Trimpie?
Hello, my name's Thomas Trimpie. I'm a resident of the Deer Chase subdivision by Flagship Park, and that's what I have questions regarding. Would there be an opportunity to ask questions later when this is presented?
This is the time to, to ask your questions.
Do it all now. Okay, got you, because I have some questions. I figured you could ask questions. Okay. So I'm an original resident of the Deer Chase subdivision from 1996. Flagship Park was built a few years later. I don't recall the year. I remember being involved because a lot of people didn't want the park. People did, a lot of issues going on. Somebody asked if we'd be on a committee with the city. So I went to a couple of meetings. I think the architect was there, a couple of citizens, city council members. I think Tom Cahill was part of that process. Four, five meetings about what this park was supposed to have and what it was going to be. It was going to be no organized activities. The park was designed specifically for that. Spaller parking lots, no lines on the fields, no anything. And then here recently, that change is being proposed. I sent an email to all council members a month ago, thank you to Ms. Kyle and Mr. Hermes for your replies. I'm just opposed to it because it was meant to be that way. I know there was, I have questions about the ordinance. It says, except running groups. To me, that's very, very vague and open-ended. What's a running group? I've heard it's cross-country. Don't know, haven't seen anything. So if changes are made, I know there's a, I like to say a running group that's on Dixie Highway on Wednesday nights. They run down Dudley, maybe 100 people. Would it be them? Could they say, hey, we want to run two? And it's just, don't want all the traffic in the neighborhood, and that was part of the whole process early on. No traffic, no parking, any of those issues. So I'm just hoping the city honors its commitment to leave that park the way it was designed. It's not a, a NIMBY thing. The NIMBY stuff was decided back then, so hopefully we can just leave the, the park as it is. That's what it was set up for. I've been there. I love telling people, say, hey, look at this park. I can go up there and just walk my dog, and I hope it, hope it stays that way. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Trimpie. A lot of the comments and questions and concerns that you have have been brought up previously, and, you know, I'll kind of throw it out there to council if you have any, any feedback, because I know that you guys have had ample conversation about this and kind of made some tweaks to the, the ordinance to only accommodate the cross-country team. So if any of you want to, to kind of chime in on that, that decision? Ms. Kyle?
The only thing I will say is I do remember, Mr. Trimpie, I was not on the committee. I know it cost the city a lot of money to build that park, and at the time, we weren't financially able to just take the money and pay for it. We had to take out, I believe it was bonds or something like that to, to, you know, pay for the park, and I do remember that it was specifically stated, no organized sports. So he is correct there, that that was the original intent.
I'm just wondering, why prompted to change it? All of a sudden, it's okay to put running groups in? Somebody's got a cross-country team, I want to practice, we'll use this, and like, it's just not considered what was originally committed to. Oh, we'll let them run, not a big deal, because I, you know, if it's 10, 15 kids, no big deal, but cross-country, it can be more than soccer or anything else. And I'm just concerned Pandora's Box would be opened, and then, hey, we're running here, bring your school out, you can practice here, too, as a weekends, nights. How many hours? How many kids? Just all those concerns. I just don't want it to get out of control and then nothing can be done.
Yeah, so a lot of your concerns were addressed by putting in a permitting process to where only one, one team could potentially practice. Sundays are left out. Any city events take precedence. It also talks on the permit, the number of participants, and that we can choose to, to tell them no. So there were some parameters put around in order to have some protections of having the abuse, and that's why we wanted to have the ultimate say of who actually gets to use the park for that purpose. Ms. Reckers, did you have something to add?
You, you said basically what I was going to say is that we, through the process, it's not part of the ordinance because that's a gen.gov function, but our role was just looking to make it more conducive to everybody. It also can be changed. If it ends up being problematic, we looked at complaint data, we looked at historical complaint data, and it, there wasn't anything at all with regard to these kids that were practicing up there. It is for a limited period of time.
They were fine.
So we took all of those factors into consideration when we crafted the, the proposed changes, but it can, I mean, we won't know until we, until we know if there's a problem.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
The only other thing I would add in addition to what they've said is we heard a lot from the parents of the runners and, that have been using it, and I, I personally, as a parent, would feel a lot better about my child running in a park versus on a sidewalk. I just, the other day, saw two kids almost get hit inside a crosswalk on scooters who were crossing when they were supposed to be, and, and that could have easily been, you know, a running group. A lot of them talked about, you know, the fact that this park is very ideal for this particular use because of the safety that it provides, and a lot of the kids are actually walking to the park from the nearby neighborhoods, so that, you know, we did have some concerns about the parking and picking up of, dropping off and picking up of kids, and, and we feel like that will not be as much of an issue as we thought it might be because a lot of the kids are actually walking. Again, and this is also not a year-round thing. Running groups are only going to be using the park during a certain time of the year, so, and then Mayor Fede has already addressed, you know, that we have basically complete control over the reservation process. So we, I, I don't have any intention of proposing any additional sports to be using Flagship Park other than this very specific use, which is why we wrote the, the new language in the ordinance the way we did. It's not allowing, you know, soccer teams to practice, it's not allowing really anybody to use it for any type of organized sport other than this very specific running group.
Yeah, those exceptions, it's kind of concerning. Like yesterday, beautiful day, park had a lot of people in it. You're adding 20, 30, 40 people, it's going to be too many. I walk my dog, there's a wooded trail, I'm going to walk down there, and if there's people running on that wooded trail cross-country, they like the woods, he might say, hey, this is our trail. That's all, all the stuff that people didn't want with the park. They said this park's going to be different, and just want to keep it that way. Please honor the commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Scott Miners?
Scott Miners, 4023 Deer Chase. A couple of questions. Did we limit the number of participants? Is that in the paperwork or not?
We didn't limit the number of participants within the ordinance. However, it is a question that is asked on the permit, so we can judge the number of parking spots versus the number of participants, and then be able to ask them further questions on, are there carpooling options? Are people walking to the park? So it gives us a little bit of subjectivity to make that determination.
All right, I was just wondering, because how are we going to enforce the numbers that they say? They say they're running 30 kids, but 50 kids show up. How do we enforce that?
Yeah.
So it doesn't become 50 to 100? That's my, one of my concerns. Let's see, what else do I have?
It's a valid concern.
Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned.
There's absolutely no way to enforce that.
We, as neighbors, we didn't report on them because years it was just a few kids, and this year it got turned into much, and we all assumed somebody else would report it, and nobody did. So we don't want this to happen again, and if we have a few, we don't want more. Just like if we see somebody playing soccer up there, that looks like a practice sport, we got to make sure we turn them in, so if somebody doesn't come and ask and say, hey, we'd really like to have soccer, so we got enough votes on council, let's let that happen. So I don't want that to happen, which I think allowing some sports is opening the Pandora's Box. And I need to know, who were we supposed to call on the non, the non-emergency number to Kent County Dispatch to have the police stop by and check?
I would just call the regular 727-2525, the office during office hours, and we'll be able to look into the, the issue.
Okay. Then my next question is, when you reserve the park for your running group, what Then my next question is, when you reserve the park for your running group, what are you actually reserved? Who gets, does that have a priority over the walking track? If somebody has a complaint, who has the right away for the park? If they're reserving it, and somebody calls and complains, is it, ooh, I've, I've got it reserved, well, what are we gonna do about that? Is there gonna be signage that says the track's reserved during events?
No, there's not gonna be a, I mean, it's just that they have the ability to be there and run on the track. It doesn't mean that they take over the full track, and it actually, in the, the permit, it says that they don't even have the access to use the shelter. So, they don't have the ability to just take over the entire shelter. So, it's really just for their presence at the park, for them to have the ability to run on the track.
Okay, so, if somebody says, why are you in my way, that there's an argument or anything, that's, they don't have any more rights to be at the park than anybody else does?
No.
All right, that's supposed to be the other one? Then we just talked about, at one point, where there's nowhere else to run, you know, there's the diocesan team, there is a big empty parking lot across the street at St. Barbara's Church with a big grass field, I don't know why, they can't use that to run instead of the park, and have to change the ordinance. That, like we said, has been in place since the park was built.
That's a good idea, actually. Maybe it'll, I mean, it might be an option at some point.
Instead of changing, I'm just, I'm also worried about the Pandora's Box of what's gonna happen next. You know, we say that cross-country is only a fall sport, well, it could be year-round if somebody wanted to run. Teams want to run track in the spring or do anything like that. I'm just worried about it taking over the park. When you have 50 kids there, that's a lot of people. We don't want to have 20 soccer kids there, but we're gonna let you have 50 kids running through the whole park. That just kind of seems worse than soccer to me. That's just my opinion. I think that's all I have for right now. So, please vote no. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miners. Okay, that concludes public comment. Pass that to her, please. All right.
I scratched my name off.
Oh. I'm sorry. If you can come to the podium and state your name, please. The orange button.
Okay, sorry. My name is Joseph Nylander. I am the coach of the cross-country team that this is turning out about. Our intention, when we got there, is we found the park by half a chance, we started running there about five years ago, and to this point, until this, excuse me, this past season, we had not had any issues. We are very neighborly when we're there, we don't intrude, we try not to intrude, we try to include all the, all the people who use the park while we were there. We encourage some of our older friends to come run with us, which they do. We've had a lot of encounters with residents using the park, who think it's great that the kids are there running. When we started this, you know, it was about 60 kids. Our program has grown, and I'm gonna be honest, our team is about 100 strong. That doesn't mean that there's gonna be 100 kids in the park at that time, it will probably average about 40 to 60 kids at a time. I am aware of parking, we have done everything we can to limit the problems with parking there. Dropping off, of course, is gonna be the bigger concern, but a lot of the parents leave, parking spots are open. We work around any type of function that the city has there, and we, we stay out of the way. For the most part, we have been pretty much invisible there, I've had no complaints. I talk to the city regularly, and I ask them constantly if there has been any kind of complaints with us being there. At that time, there was no complaints, no one has said anything, up until this past season, where some encounters took place, which I was not aware of. What I don't want to see happen here is, are your neighbors pitting each other against your neighbors? I am not a resident of Erlanger, I am just the coach of this cross-country team. Parents are, whereas a lot of parents who live in those neighborhoods that you guys have talked about. And I feel terrible that this is going on, this is not what our intention is. We have looked at other places, the last thing I want is for this. I know the city has a lot more important things to discuss, rather than if we can use a park to run in. That is not what we set out to do. And I do apologize to the neighbors and the residents if we did create some problem and you guys didn't, you know, let anyone know. That's truly not our, our thing. We are very neighborly there, we're very encouraging, we do use the shelter at times when there's no one there. If someone's there with parties, we've been there with that as well, we move on, we go somewhere else and we do our business. And yes, it is safe, it is very safe for kindergarteners through 8th grade to run. These are not high school students, they're not driving their cars, they're not running rottwild, I make sure that everything is organized and contained. You know, other than that, that's why we're there. It was a safe place, it was open, there's hardly, when, when we're there, there's not that many people there. So, like I said, up until last year, there was no, no problem. I don't even know if you guys even knew we were there. And if so, I didn't hear about it. And I try my very best to make sure that we are neighborly, that we clean up after ourselves, that we're cordial, and we're invited to anyone who is there. We've actually had children who joined the team, who seen us up there and wanted to know what we were about, they joined the team, and a couple of them are still running today. They don't, you know, because it is a diocesan's group, we incorporate a few grade schools as well as homeschool. If it wasn't for our team, these homeschool elementary kids would not have a sport to run. That being said, I can't, I can't continue to, to come to here and listen to our neighbors, you know, discuss this and, and feel like I'm making this at odds. That's not what I'm here for. I don't, I don't want to do that. And it feels like, right now, I'm causing problems with, with the neighbors and what the park was intended for, I get all that. You know, my families would be, you know, yelling and screaming at me right now. So, I leave it up to the council, the mayor, the residents, you know, I just give you guys a little bit about what I do, you're more than welcome to ask me a question if they allow it, and I'll try to answer it. If not, again, thank you guys so very much for everything that you have allowed us to do. It's been great, the Public Works is up there, we try to help them out. And I also always invite any of you to come and watch what we do, and see these kids and what that park does for them. Now, I get all the other stuff, you don't want any of that there, no, neither do I. I don't want to compete for that, but it's hard not to. We have a gem there, and, you know, I would love to keep it, but if not, I get it. Thank you guys so very much, God bless, the work you do.
Thank you. Okay, we have to move on. I'm, yeah, but we're gonna have to move on. Okay.
If the group was in the park previously, last couple of years, and I've seen them again, no problems, did someone give them permission? Because they weren't able to give them permission, the park couldn't be used for organized sports. Did someone tell them they could use the park?
No.
Did they bother to ask?
I don't think they thought there was a rule against organized sports.
Okay.
From, from what we have understood, they didn't have any idea that there was an ordinance against it.
Okay, I would think that someone would ask, and that just, again, they were fine, no problems, they were there last year, but just wanted to, wanted to be sure, because it wasn't permitted. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. I do have to, I do have to go ahead and move on. I, I apologize, but we're gonna need to move on. If you guys want to talk outside, awesome. Okay. For the mayor's report, I want to let you all know that two days ago, I received a letter in the mail from the Arbor Day Foundation, and we have successfully achieved becoming a Tree City USA. So, this is huge. This is a huge endeavor that was, was taken on and brought to us by our catalyst for the positive change that we see around the city, Mr. Peter Glenn. If not for you, we would have no idea what Arbor Day is, what being a Tree City USA is, and why it's so critically important for our city to invest in what they're dedicated to. We did not know until you explained and taught us about it. So, thank you for being that, that catalyst. Now, it takes a team to make it all happen. So, you brought in this idea to the City Beautification Task Force, which many of you are a part of, and brought this idea, which then led to create, the creation of an Urban Forestry Commission. Now, we have an entire group of people that are dedicated to planting new trees for future generations, and a whole nother group of people that take part in our city. And this is the, the fruits of the labor. So, thank you, and thank you to the City Beautification Task Force, that's led by council member Nicely, I almost called you mayor Nicely. So, congratulations, and thank you for your dedication to the City Beautification efforts. I think we all are seeing, you know, this, this transformation around the city, and making sure that we are being intentional with the resources that we have to improve the, the image and the brand for future generations. With that said, and I don't want to steal your thunder, but there, we have the Arbor Day for this year set for the 29th, is that right? The 29th of April. So, please mark your calendars, and I'm sure Councilwoman Nicely will explain just a little bit about that in just a little bit, so that you guys can make sure you're there for the festivities. So, thank you to everybody that also is on the Urban Forestry Commission, fantastic The only other thing that I want to, to mention, I received a package in the mail yesterday. It came all the way from Colorado by, it was from a guy named Dominic Phillips, and he, he found, when he was cleaning out his grandparents' house, he found an H Simonton, and I hadn't seen this one yet, but he emailed me a couple of months ago and asked if we wanted it. So, he, on his own dime, sent it all the way here from Colorado, and it arrived in the mail yesterday, and I just want to say thank you to Mr. Phillips for thinking about us. I mean, he, he said, I was gonna just donate them, but I thought Erlanger would want this. So, I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Phillips. So, we now have a new piece of art, so. I wonder if Mr. Phillips is watching tonight? All right. Okay, that concludes my report. Mr. Wolfek, City Administrator's Report.
All right, thank you. Yes, I have a couple of items. In light of the recent windstorms and tornadoes that have recently struck the area, I did want to just remind that if that would ever happen here, we could shelter in place in the basement of this building, and just follow staff, we would go through this door back here to a stairway to the basement. So, that, that would be our plan for a tornado. For a fire, there are three exits, the main lobby, there's an exit here, and then also this exit has access to our back parking lot. Okay. Also, I wanted to mention that Emmy Randall has arranged for a photographer to come in. It will be on March 21st from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, that is right before our next caucus meeting. So, any council member needing a photograph or would like to update their existing photograph can schedule during that time period, and to get an appointment, just call Emmy. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gatlin, City Attorney's Report.
I have nothing, we have quite a bit of legislation tonight, and I'll discuss it when we get to it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Glenn, Capital Projects.
Okay, just a couple of things to mention, now that we're into March, and hopefully the snow season's behind us, we're going out and doing all the turf damage repair work that we've done, we've got a notice on our webpage, so if anybody knows of anybody with turf damage, if you know of anything, just let us know. We tour the city and look for damage that we've done over the winter, but getting a list together from the residents also helps, so it's very welcome that we've got probably a half a dozen or so notices so far. Railroad underpass project, so over the last couple of years, sure doesn't seem like a whole lot's going on, and, you know, and I think that's probably mostly true, but what I got to report on tonight would be that our right-of-entry permit has been approved, which is the biggest hurdle of all. So, the railroad has approved us to do what we said we're gonna do, when we said we're gonna do it. So, that's a good thing. The next thing that we've done is the railroad protection application has been submitted back to them, which is our agreeance to their inspectors on the project, so they have multiple inspectors, while any time that you're within their kind of railroad right-of-way, making sure that we're not gonna impede their rail system, so that's the next thing. And then, once that's approved, we're gonna have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for maybe mid-April, and the project will begin in early May. So, with fingers crossed, we are moving forward, so. Great news. We got a project starting, Hillcrest Paving Project, which is with Wrigler Blacktop, and it's also, it's a stormwater initiative that we're doing a 50/50 call-share project with SD1 on, and then, just to kind of follow up on the Kennebou Avenue, so that's a street improvement project that we have come up budgeted for next year. So, with that street project, some issues that have come up would be, is the street width and the radiuses there at Kennebou and Dixie Highway. So, what we're looking at is, is there any kind of possibilities, and that's what the gentleman is concerned about, is when we, we have a pretty normal width of right-of-way in that area, and, but the street is only 19 feet wide, and our typical street in any kind of subdivision is only, is 25 feet wide. I'm sorry. That's my mom. So, yes, it's 25 feet wide. So, here we got Kennebou at 19 feet wide, which is totally too narrow, and the radiuses are super tight. So, we're looking at the possibility of widening the street and changing the radiuses, and then, as Florence did on their portion of Kennebou, they added a sidewalk. So, we're also trying to add a sidewalk. So, that's gonna be very impactful to certain businesses, and like the mayor said, and as we've discussed onsite, is that we're not gonna move forward with anything until we get all the, the businesses on board and making them whole. We certainly don't want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and then end up with property owners that are in worse shape than when we started. So, we definitely want our improvement projects to move traffic and pedestrians efficiently, but also to increase property values, which is our main initiative. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, are there any other reports from department heads? Ms. Hoffman?
This month, we're recognizing retired police chief and former council member Ken Yaden. You can visit our website to learn about all the really great things that Kenny did for the city when he was here. I do want to add that, you know, every month, I mention who we're recognizing, and it's put out in social media, but we do hear back from the individuals and the families just how much it means to But we do hear back from the individuals and the families just how much it means to them that we do this. Today, I heard from Kenny's wife, Bobby, that, you know, it just really brightened Kenny's day when he found out that years later, you know, the city still thinks of him and it still means a lot to the community, you know, that he did make a difference. So, they say it's important that we do this, and I'm glad that, that we do. The only other thing I wanted to mention was that our education scholarship is due on March 10th at 4:00 p.m. It's a $2,500 scholarship for any graduating senior who lives in Erlanger. And then, that's all I have.
Thank you. I know everybody's sick of hearing about budget, but we do have Budget Bootcamp on April 15th. And in more exciting news, we're getting ready for summer send-off in September of 2023. And I have been tasked to fundraise. So, this is my little commercial for all the businesses in Erlanger. I've been hitting you up, and if I haven't yet, I will. So, we're going to be looking for money for donations to help pull off our city community event. So, September 23rd, and I'll be reaching out to all the businesses. Thanks. Kara got tasked with that because she was so good at it in Crestview Hills and made Crestview Hills Concert Series the success that it is today. So, she's, she's a wealth of information and knowledge on how to do it the right way. So, very happy, happy with your support. Okay. Guys? Chief? Okay. Good. All right. Are there any reports from task force representatives this evening? Ms. Nicely?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pretty excited. I chaired the City Beautification Committee. And like you said, on April 29th at Flagship Park. There'll be more information coming out soon. But we'll be planting 20 trees, grilling out, passing out tree saplings, and I'm so excited. I cut my vacation short last year to attend the first one. So, I'm looking forward to this one, and I will cut my vacation short if I need to. And another thing coming up that is really good stuff, I met with Chief Gottse, and we're going to bring back the Fire EMS Task Force. I was part of this last year. We've had some changes on council. And we want to open this to any council members, the public. The meeting will be on March 15th, next Wednesday, at 5:00 p.m. At Fire Station Number One, which is right over here in Graves. So, anybody's welcome. So, hope we can have more council members and the public join us and get some good ideas. Thank you, that's all I have.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Hermes?
The Parks Task Force met this evening at 5:00 p.m. We reviewed the current and upcoming parks, the projects that are going on in the parks. But one of the things I wanted to talk about was something that Mr. Glenn has put together, a long-range improvement plan for the parks. As many of you know, we've already got the parks' master plans complete for six of our 12 parks. There's still six more to go. But what he began to put together was a plan of how we actually go through and improve those parks with the budget that we've allocated, the $500,000 a year for the parks. So, the good news is there's a plan. The bad news is it'll take till 2039 to get all the parks improved. So, we start with a plan. You know, we need that roadmap to begin the, the journey. And so, it's still in its infancy, but I'm glad to see that he's taken the initiative, initiative to put it together. Thank you.
Any other task forces? Ms. Jasper Lucas?
I'll keep this brief. On the Cherry Hill Task Force, we do seem to see a reduction in the semis that are going through Cherry Hill and not causing as much damage. There was a semi this past week, but no damage. There has been some new signage added thanks to our Public Works Department, as well as Boone County adding some delineators. And then, our police have been very helpful in getting the GPS systems that truckers use updated. So, we feel like all of these things combined with communication with the tenants that Ms. Randall has done in the Erlanger Commerce Center, all of those things combined have really helped to reduce the number of semis. So, we're just going to continue monitoring that. We're not going to schedule another task force meeting immediately because our last one only lasted about 30 minutes because there wasn't actually a whole lot to talk about. So, we're just going to monitor the situation, but it is improving. We're just keeping an eye on the numbers. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Okay, this evening, we have a couple of bids to talk about. I'm actually going to talk about two of them, two out of the three. So, we did put out the bid for City Attorney. We had one wonderful bidder who we have awarded. So, Mr. Jack Gatlin will continue serving our fantastic city for the next four years. So, thank you for your service.
Tough competition beating out one person, right? Myself?
All right. And then, we had the City Engineer Bid. So, this is something that I don't think we've bid pretty much ever. We've never put out a public bid. Vioxx has been our city engineer for well over 50 years at this point. So, we've put out the bid, and we received Vioxx and Vioxx as the bid, one of the bidders, and then Palmer Engineering as the other bidder. We have chosen to, to continue with Vioxx and Vioxx. However, the contract will now be with the company versus the individual. So, our previous contract had, had only been with Jim Vioxx. And he was more than willing to move that over to his, his company to have them take the reins. And we've been actively working with their team for many, many years anyways. So, this is going to be a very easy or nonexistent transition. So, we are continuing with Vioxx and Vioxx. And actually, we're saving money, which is so awesome. So, the percentages on our road, our road projects and our sidewalk projects are now, they match. They are the same that they are right now, but they match the city of Florence. And there will be no retainer. So, the retainer has been eliminated. So, we're actually saving money in the long run, which is great. So, that, any other questions on that? Okay. All right. And then, we have Cahill Commons Phase One improvements. Mr. Glenn?
All right, thank you. So, we opened bids on February 21st for Cahill Commons Phase One Construction Project. So, that would be the, the area closest to Stevenson. So, if you were to split the park in half, it would be the half of the park closest to Stevenson. And with some fencing, signage, some landscaping, and a pull-off on Rainbow Terrace. And the, we received two bids. And the, the bid will be awarded to Beaumont Building Group. They're the same company that did our signage project up on Stevenson and Turkeyfoot. And their total bid was $267,682. So, that's well within budget, so we're going to proceed on with that. And then, we actually had one other bid that I had to report on, which would be the Hillcrest Stormwater Project, which was, like I said, the, the Call Share Program with SD1. And that was with Wrigler Blacktop. We opened those bids on February 7th. And the total bid is $172,626. And that's also within budget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any unfinished business? Ms. Skidmore?
I just wanted to read my Kenton County Alliance Report. I don't think you saw my hand when I raised it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's real short. We had 40, 40 people in attendance at the Kenton County Alliance Meeting that was held at the Erlanger branch of the library. There's going to be a new program for the middle schools. This will be broken down into several groups. Children five and under, kindergarten to sixth grade, junior high, and high school. Middle school will have a new program, Catch My Breath. It will involve C-IGs, E-SIGs, and tobacco awareness. And the aim is to inform within-class activities. Crossed-Age Buddy Program. This would also be paired through in-class activities. Seek, aspire, share, fulfill, and achieve. Sticker shock was mentioned, and this is usually done around prom time. So, we'll talk about that at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any new business? Okay. Legislation, Mr. Gatlin?
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have a second reading of ordinance amending Section 96.29 of the Erlanger Code of Ordinances and Ordinance Number 2343 related to restrictions of use of organized athletic teams at Flagship Park. What is underlined is what is being added to this ordinance. Such under one, the old ordinance had organized practices. These are under the prohibition section. Organized practices by any members of any athletic team. We're adding the underlying excluding running groups. So, running groups would not be prohibited. But then, we're also adding additional prohibitions of games, competitions, scrimmages, and meets of any kind between or among organizations or athletic teams. This is a second reading.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Ms. Reckers? Mr. Cahill? Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Kyle?
I just want to go on record as saying, I, I have really been torn over this issue. I see both sides. And I'm all in favor of kids having a place to run. And obviously, the one team that's been up there has not caused any problems. But I don't want to open up Pandora's Door to other problems. And so, I feel like I should be loyal to the commitment that I made years ago. And I'm going to have to vote against it. I just wanted people to understand why I'm voting against it. Nothing against the team that's been there. You guys have been great. And it breaks my heart that I have to do that. Hopefully, we can find you another spot. It's just, but it'll probably go through.
Mr. Hermes?
I, I feel like I'm in the same boat as Mrs. Kyle on this. I'm certainly in favor of running at the park and the running groups at the park. However, I feel like the amendment is far from perfect. I think it does deserve a little bit more discussion. I would certainly like to get the buy-in from the Deer Chase neighbors and residents. The running group is great. They're respectful and well-organized. But the law is potentially forever and can outlive all of us. A running group in 20 years may not be, you know, as respectful and well-organized. And that's kind of my hesitation with the changes. Thank you.
Ms. Nicely?
I wanted to chime in a little bit, too. I have the same feelings as Ms. Kyle and Mr. Hermes, too. I'm a mom and a grandma, and I can appreciate keeping the children safe and running in the park. And I never want to see kids running the street, especially the young kids. I also feel that, I wasn't on council then and a part of this when the ordinance took place. But I also need to respect the homeowners of Deer Chase. And I, I, it breaks my heart that we're put in a position to vote either way because seeing the, the children that were running, coming up, seeing how they picked up, they were very respectable children that you manage. And letting other kids in the park join in means so much to me. And picking up the trash and being such good kids. And then, the homeowners, they're, were just put in a very bad situation that I really need to decide more on this as well, too, because I don't want our city to be in turmoil. I want children to be safe, but I want to recognize the original ordinance as well, too. So, I just wanted to explain where I'm coming from. I'm very torn on this. Thank you.
Ms. Reckers?
I, I feel like this, we've had a lot of time to digest this. I proposed the changes back in November, and we decided to table a discussion because we would be dealing with a different group of folks. I, I, I do agree. I, I live, I'm a Lakemont resident. I have talked extensively with the parents of the children. These are, these are Erlanger kids. So, it's not, it's, I love, believe me, I, it's no fault to Deer Chase. I love Deer Chase. I, I know a lot of your neighbors. These kids live in Trail Liddo Run, they live in Lakemont, they live in Brightleaf. They go to many schools within, within our community and, and homeschools as well. It's, it's an opportunity for them to be off the street and in a safe environment. I completely understand how this can be, this change can be of concern to folks. But we won't know if there's an issue after the change until we allow it to happen and see if, if this becomes an issue or not. We have no idea what that looks like. And actually, Ms. Kyle, that was your idea, to, to change, to, to reevaluate after, after a period of time. I understand what the initial intent was with the park, but the park is for everyone. And we master plan, we spend thousands upon thousands, tens of thousands of dollars on master plans to keep our parks fresh and reinvent things and, and bring in pickleball and do all of these cool, new, innovative things. Who would have thought 20 years ago that, that Silver Lake Park would be a, would have pickleball courts? No one. I mean, my husband used to play basketball on that court 30 years ago with this, with, that's all that Silver Lake Park was known for was basketball. They'd go up there and they'd go home. And now, we've got concerts. We've got, we've seen an evolution in Silver Lake Park alone that is fantastic in, in the future of our city. We breathe life into that through the master planning process. I, this is a very small change, and I understand it can be a lot to people who, you know, who may or may not be affected. But we don't know if that change will negatively impact Deer Chase, the Deer Chase community at all. But it could negatively, negatively impact 60 Erlanger families whose kids ride that pious bus home every day and go up there and they walk up to the park and they run for one hour for like a, an eight-week period of time during the summer. If that's the running group that fills out a permit. Through this process, we're establishing controls and, and structure with the general government department to manage the process. We don't know if there's going to be a problem. But we do know that in other areas, we do forward-thinking, we reinvent our parks. We, you know, I'm in no way proposing soccer fields at Flagship Park. Absolutely not. I love Flagship Park, but it's for everybody. So, I hope that you guys take that into consideration, that we can, we could revisit this with this governing body in January of next year just to see the complaint data, if it comes, if there's anything that populates. Because we looked at, I requested five years, and Sheri, you went farther back than five years. So, I just think it's worth giving it a chance to, to keep this a safe space for everyone to, to run and reevaluate at a later date if we need to. Thank you.
Mr. Cahill?
So, getting elected at that time, I mean, part of that park, park situation, I can tell you that the original intent was not to have those organized sports. We looked at some stuff such as basketball, things like that. However, that was never written into that ordinance. That ordinance came after the fact, once the soccer team went up there and was practicing. So, that is, that is the history of this. So, it was not an original intent of this park not to be just a community park. It was supposed to be used for residents, supposed to be people up there utilizing it. And honestly, the most trouble we've had is not from coaches and their kids being up there, but it's from residents. So, thank you.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Thank you, Tom, for reflecting on that, what the original intent was. I appreciate that perspective. I just wanted to echo what Ms. Recker said as well. And, and I wanted to mention just how many parents I've talked to. I, I live in Sherborn, which is just one neighborhood over from Flagship. And there's a lot of families that live in my neighborhood that their kids are part of this running group as well. And I have probably heard from more parents in support of this, allowing them to use this than I have heard the, from the opposite side. So, that's kind of how I try to gauge my decisions. I realize that everybody's not going to contact me with their opinion on everything. But, but I do, I, I just want to, I just want to mention that I, I feel like I've heard from a lot more parents that want their, want their kids to be able to continue doing it. The other thing I would mention is somewhat of what everybody said, that times have changed and, and, you know, our parks evolve as things- and, you know, our parks evolve as things change. Pickleball was not a thing five years ago or 10 years ago, but now, that's what everybody wants all of our parks to have. And so, we, we have done that, and other parks have done that. And so, our parks are for everyone. They're not for a select few. Again, we're not, we're not saying we're going to allow soccer practices or basketball tournaments or anything like that in this particular park. It was, it's not conducive to that because of where it's located. It is conducive to this. And the last thing that I'll mention is mental health. It is a known fact that exercise helps mental health. And if you have kids that are in elementary or middle school, I guarantee you that you're concerned about their mental health, especially since COVID. It is well-documented in the media, be with psychologists and psychiatrists. It is a huge, huge problem across the entire country, and this is one thing that we can do to help these kids, is get them outside, get them exercising. It does help, and I'll do anything I can to support that. So, I will be voting yes gladly for this. And while I'm concerned about what might happen in the neighborhoods around it, I agree with what Ms. Reckers said. We don't know what the problem might be until we allow this to happen, and we have a process in place to permit this and put parameters and guidelines on it. So, that's all I wanted to share. Thanks.
Ms. Kyle?
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's interesting to me that some people on council heard from more parents who are for it than against it. I was just the opposite. I think I only had one parent contact me and ask to, ask for this change. I have had so many people reach out to me against this. So, I feel like, you know, these are the people that I represent, and I feel in conscience that I have to, I have to follow what I think is right.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Nicely?
I'm sorry, this will be my last time. Thank you, Mr. Cahill, for shedding some light since you were part of the beginning stages of the ordinance. And I agree with the other council members and stuff. We want our children to be exercising, being healthy mentally and physically, and this is so hard, and I have to say the same things, too. The people that reached out to me were against it. I have to take that into consideration when I'm voting. Again, it's nothing against you, the safety of the children comes first, but we are representing the citizens, and the ones that came to me, there was a long list of them that were against it. So, that's why we'll be voting against it, but I am very torn on this subject. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Nicely?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore? Mr. Hermes?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore? Ms. Kyle?
No, ma'am.
Motion failed.
All right, next, we have an ordinance of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Erlanger ordinance numbers 2542, 2543, and 2548, and the budget adopted thereby for the City of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2022, and ending on June 30, 2023. Attached to the ordinance is the spreadsheet, which details that this budget amendment is changing the capital asset fund from 3.5 million to 5.5 million, which is an increase of $2 million based on the bid and recommended amended budget for the Montgomery Drive property. This also is a second reading.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Mr. Cahill, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Wilson? Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore? Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion carried.
All right, next, we have an ordinance amending Section 92.01 of the Erlanger Code of Ordinances, updating the Uniform Fire Code adopted to the 2018 edition. This is merely a housekeeping matter, which is literally just doing that. It's amending our, the reference to the fire code in our Uniform Fire Code adopted ordinance to reference the most current one, which is the 2018 edition. This also is a second reading. And the 800-page code is available if anyone wants to read it. Ms. Hoffman did not print it out for tonight's meeting.
Matt Kramer is proud of you. All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Mr. Kyle, Mr. Hermes, any discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Cahill? Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. Joe's not here, is he? All right, any discussion?
I was just going to say they might pull back our Arbor Day thing if we print that whole thing out.
Amen. That was good. You need like a rim shot. Mr. Cahill and Mr. Hermes. Oh, boy. All right, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson? Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am, on both counts.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore? Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carried.
All right, next, we have a municipal order of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Rumkey for the exclusive use of the public streets and rights away of the city for the collection and disposal of all solid waste from property of the city and collectible solid waste from all residential collection units within the city. This was a prior bid, and this is just exercising the two-year renewal with Rumkey. It does require a vote. It's just a municipal order, though.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mr. Hermes, Ms. Kyle? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. We need to roll backwards to the surplus property.
Sorry about that. All right. Municipal order of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, making the written determinations required by KRS 82083 for the sale or other disposition of property owned by the city. Attached is what is being disposed of, which is two, I'm sorry, a 2015 Dodge Charger as well as a 2016 Dodge Charger, which both will be sold by electronic auction.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mr. Cahill, Ms. Reckers, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next, we have a municipal order of the City of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving an interlocal agreement for the enforcement of the Erlanger Code of Ethics by a joint board. This is an updated interlocal agreement, because there have been a couple new cities that have been added to the Northern Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority. And due to that, and I'm guessing it's William, well, I don't know who it is, to be brutally honest with you, but there are two new cities that have joined it, which requires each city to adopt a new interlocal agreement.
Okay, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Ms. Kyle, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Another related housekeeping issue is a municipal order accepting the reappointment of Marcus Carey, Daryl Cummins, Robert Sanders, Tom Quirk, Bryce Rhodes, and Jack Westwood, and the appointment of James Dotty as members of the Northern Kentucky Regional Ethics Authority Enforcement Committee for a two-year term commencing February 1, 2023 and expiring on January 31, 2025. The Ethics Board makes these recommendations, and these are their slot of board members. Also requires a vote.
Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Ms. Jasper Lucas, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next is a resolution supporting the passage of House Bill 343 relating to universal recognition of occupational licenses. This is a resolution which states it's urging our state legislatures to vote in favor of House Bill 343. House Bill 343 deals with not creating barriers between the states for certain occupational licenses, and that's about the extent of my knowledge of it. I don't know, Mayor, if you wanted to add anything to that or who's.
From my understanding, it's any kind of like trade or occupation that, so if you would come from Ohio, that it would be the same, you wouldn't have to change anything?
Right, the analogy I heard last night in another city council meeting was that we want to reduce the barriers so a hairdresser in Ohio can come and work in Kentucky without having to get new licensing and certifications in Kentucky.
Okay, this is a resolution. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution as read? Ms. Kyle, Mr. Hermes, any discussion? Ms. Jasper Lucas?
So, I read the House bill, and as a licensed professional, I just, I can't support the resolution. The bill is not well-thought-out, and it's too vague. I understand the need to encourage workforce development, but the only example I've been given so far is hairdressers. And I don't think there's a huge demand for hairdressers. I know there are for a lot of other licensed professions, but there's a reason that different states have different requirements for licenses. There are some industries that this may work for, but there's a lot of industries that it won't work for. Neighboring states already have compacts in place for certain industries. The medical licenses in a lot of situations are already recognized in other states because professional organizations have come together to form compacts. These work well, but there's no way to just allow any licensed professional to cross state lines and have their license recognized by Kentucky. Again, I'm very much in support of growing our workforce and removing red tape, but I feel like this actually adds more red tape, perhaps, and it might open our state up to potentially untrained workers who don't understand what our needs are and may not have the right licensing requirements that we would normally require.
Ms. Wilson?
I agree to, for this resolution. I personally see the need of beauticians allowed to work over here in our city. I, since I've been in this area, I have personally and friends and family have to go to Cincinnati in order to get our hair done because of the lack of services in this area. And I, I don't know if it's because of licensing, but I would think that it would help to open that door to allow them to come and work over here in this area.
Ms. Kyle?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought there was a clause in there that stated that when they did come to another state, that it was on the condition that they met our requirements. I thought that was discussed at the last meeting.
I believe that is what Representative Joan had said. Okay, any other discussion? Okay. This is just a resolution, so typically, it's just a voice vote. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? I think. Okay, we're just going to do a roll call. Sorry, Dean.
Ms. Reckers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore? Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson? Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion carried. All right. All right, are there any announcements this evening? Okay, I have one other little thing to do before we adjourn. Mr. Cahill, you had asked Mr. Glenn for a copy of the Cahill Commons Master Plan, and we kind of, what Peter has put together for you is we had every single person in the City of Erlanger staff sign, "This is in dedication to your mother and her phenomenal service and dedication to our city." So, thank you. We're so excited to get Cahill Commons, the first round of improvements, started.
So, it was her birthday yesterday, too. So, thank you very much. It's very timely.
Happy birthday, happy heavenly birthday. All right, any other announcements this evening? All right, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Reckers, Ms. Nicely, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.